Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming. We'll start the regular session of the Reed School Board meeting. Would you all please rise and pledge allegiance to the Constitution.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have a forum. We will be working on a revised agenda this evening. Any other changes to the agenda that you'd like?
No.
Next agenda revision is A. We have right off to start off with that, presentation. And who'd like to introduce Lenora?
I'll introduce Lenora, but I'm gonna introduce Camp Ryla while you're making your way up. The Rotary of Reed's Board has the opportunity every year to sponsor one student from our high school to go to Camp Ryla. And I'll let them not be still in the worst thunder about what Ryla is, but she was this year's recipient of best scholarship. And today we'll be presenting her experiences there. And that'll be the presentation that you get to see tonight. Yes?
There you go. Josh, can you turn down a little bit so those folks can see the screen?
I can try!
Please, thank you. There we go. Thank you.
Cindy, can you see?
Not really, but it's okay.
You have to watch it, watch the recording later.
As seen to district members, I stand before you today to share my transformative experience at Ryla, a journey that's profoundly shaped my perspective on leadership, community, and the power of human connection. From the moment I arrived, I was immersed in a vibrant community of young leaders from diverse backgrounds. One of the most impactful aspects of Ryla was the opportunity to connect with international students, like Andrea from Italy. Through our conversations, I gained a deeper appreciation for cultural differences and the importance of global understanding. I learned that while American culture emphasizes sports and extracurricular activities, Italian culture prioritizes a more refined and straightforward education system. This experience broadened my perspective and challenged my assumptions about different approaches to learning. Ryla also provided a unique space to explore various leadership styles and discover my own strengths. I learned that my introspective and inclusive approach, which values hearing and validating others' opinions, can be a powerful asset in fostering collaboration and growth. In one particularly challenging group project, I was able to use my leadership style to bridge communication gaps and bring people together, ultimately leading to a successful outcome. One day at Ryla was dedicated to emotional awareness, a topic that resonated deeply with me. Through emotional exercises and open discussions, I witnessed the vulnerability and strengths of my peers as they shared their experiences and perspectives. This experience taught me the importance of emotional intelligence in leadership and the power of empathy in building strong relationships. Inspired by the spirit of service and community that permeated Ryla, my team and I developed an innovative app design to connect people with local volunteer opportunities. This app, which includes features like calendar of events and volunteer hour tracking, aims to empower individuals to make a difference in their communities. Ryla has not only equipped me with the valuable skills and knowledge, but it has also ignited a passion within me to be a catalyst for positive change. I am committed to using my experiences and insights to serve my community and contribute to a more just and equitable world. Thank you for this incredible opportunity. I am confident that Ryla will continue to empower young leaders to create a brighter future for themselves and their communities. Does anyone have any questions they'd like to ask about Ryla?
How long was it? What was the camp?
It was about a week. I believe we arrived on like Monday and then we left on Saturday, so...
Was this through the Rotary?
Yes, this was a leadership camp through Rotary. So Rotary sponsored me to be able to go to this camp, which I'm very grateful for. It was an amazing experience.
Were they all, everybody that was at the camp, were they all you? Young adults like yourself from the United States or were they international?
So, a lot of them were from the United States. They're all like sophomores, juniors, some were seniors. But Rotary has a connection with other Rotary clubs, I guess, in like other countries, where they're able to sponsor students in other countries, like Italy, to come to America for 12 months and study abroad with like foster families here, where that can like take care of them while they stay here. And one of those students, like I mentioned, Andrea from Italy, he was from Italy. And so he had the opportunity to come to Ryla before he left back to Italy after his 12 months program. And I was able to talk to him a lot and learn a lot about, you know, different education systems and culture and all that.
How were students selected to go over for 12 months back to back and forth, do you know?
Um, I'm not sure. I think what he told me was it was brought up to him by his school. And he enlisted to join this and they accepted him. He had to fill out a lot of papers and they sponsored him to come to America.
So you had to, that forum exchange?
Yes.
I hope you consider running for student body elections and leadership because you're so well spoken and I'm so impressed. What did you learn?
Well, thank you so much and I would really enjoy an opportunity like that if I decided to. Um, anyone have any questions?
How did you hear about Ryla?
Um, so my school counselor, Ms. Luck, asked me, talked to me about Ryla, told me what it was, and asked me if I'd be interested in going. And told me that she thinks I would have a pretty good opportunity going to this camp and just with my work and my overall personality, I guess. And I would also really like to thank my school counselor, Ms. Luck, personally for giving me this opportunity because it's definitely something I recommend out of a lot of kids.
Where was the camp built?
It was the, um...
I want to say Dorina or?
Dorina, yeah, I live in Dorina.
Oh, Dorina, out of Troy, yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay, I know that area, sure.
So, Lenora, did you develop a new kind of project? Or anything that you wanted to do coming back to school for the year? Is there, are you inspired to take on any particular challenge?
Yes. A problem that I usually see in my school and just me personally is like our community service opportunities. And while I was at Ryla, we were able to be put in the groups and they had to come up with ideas that Rotary can sponsor to, in like a way to help better our communities. And my team came up with like a website or an app design where it can connect people with volunteer opportunities, where people can go and basically post like volunteer opportunities, like to say, oh, I'm hosting the beach cleanup in this place at this time. And people are able to sign up for it and they're able to get more connected with their communities and see more of their options. And like I said, like volunteer hour tracking was an option. So students can track the hours they work. And I think it would be a really great thing for schools to offer to students to have that available for...
Is that something you're working on building or it just is at a conceptual level?
It's kind of just a conception. We would need someone who is skilled in tech design to be able to come up and create this website. But if we were able to find someone who could do that, I think it could be a possibility. I really hope to see that happen.
Hey, ladies, you may remember we used to have a spot on the dais for a sixth residential member previously. I don't know if there's anything that you want to consider for, for this board for this year. It's a non-voting position, but having a student voice has been something previously that this board has gotten and other boards around the state do.
Okay, I'll check that out for next month.
We do that at city council.
Yeah, student. That's a good idea, thank you, John. Lenora, you're gonna be a junior, is that right?
Uh, yes.
And with accolades, we'll start those in the October board meeting. Give kids a chance to get back in school and become all they can be. Community comments. These are individuals who may address the board on agenda or non-agenda items excluding personal complaints. To speak at the meeting, please, you sign up at the table, indicate the agenda item if applicable, complete a community comment card, and limit your remarks to three minutes. If you cannot afford to, if you cannot attend in person, there are written or email comments will be accepted by 3:00 P.M. on the day of the meeting for inclusion in that meeting's agenda. Stacy, are you in the audience?
Yeah, I'm right here.
Stacy is a library assistant and she wants to know how can the library and the schools work together? Are you talking about the city library, Stacy?
Yeah, right here in Reed's Board.
Okay, talk to us, tell us something.
I had the summer school, which this summer, come one day a week, which was a lot of fun for me. And one of the things that I'd like to do is be able to come to the school or the school can come to me, or both, so that we can teach them some library skills. We could maybe do like some kind of borrowing agreement. I made a deal with staff at the elementary school that I would make sure every elementary student had access to the library and hopefully a library card. So, and then we talked about maybe doing a bookmobile. We could bring books to you, we could borrow books from you as well. So, and the friends at the library are talking about helping with the cost of having an extra person go to the schools. So I just wanted to present it to the board that...
I like that idea a lot, thank you.
And whatever ideas the school has, you know, I'm just kind of throwing things out the rooftop.
And I see Mr. Yulings and Mrs. Watts ears all perked up at that presentation, so...
Do students have to pay for a card?
No. They have to have parents' signature and the parent's ID number. So we could figure that out, we could do an electronic card, we could do an institutional card where we're checking it out to the school. So there's a lot of different ideas.
Stacy, is your contact information on your community comment?
The library is on there. I can leave my telephone number too if you'd like.
Library phone, is your library phone number?
That's the library phone number.
Okay.
And next, next week is our board meeting. So the director is gonna talk to the board about what kind of ideas they have.
You want to make sure that we have a good email or contact information before you leave?
Okay.
We'll be reaching out.
Okay. Nice.
Thank you. Anything on the screen, John?
Charmin, do we have any community comments? Because we don't see that part on the screen.
I do not see any current community comments.
Thank you.
All right, let's move into reports.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
I was a fan first.
Sure, let's have Rachel Amos, our business manager.
So we are just wrapping things up for the fiscal year, doing the final prep work for the audit and the closeout. So our fiscal year ending estimate, you will see on the reports, right at $1.3 million, which is what we've been estimating for the last two months. So that seems to be a good solid number. We don't expect any surprises at this point. I think we budgeted to end the year at, or begin the budget year at 1.2. So that's, that's a good solid number to start with, barring any final adjustments. I believe you all received the information that I shared with Charmin to share with you from Piper Sandler after last month's meeting related to the Geo bonds. So I just wanted to just follow up and make sure there weren't any questions that anybody had or if there were any questions on the reports tonight.
I don't have any questions.
Now September's meeting, we'll have the new fiscal year board reports because we'll actually have a full month's worth of expenditures finalized and under our belt. So this will be the last of the 24, 25 reports and the 25, 26 reports for start next month.
You don't foresee any hiccups or any surprises, correct?
I do not.
I think... Any questions, Cindy? One?
No. No, let me out easy.
I know, it's a miserable day. I don't have any questions. If there's no questions for Rachel, thank you very much for the report.
You're welcome.
And for the semi-good news. Okay, let's hear from our superintendent, please.
I've just got three items for you this evening. First, since we're in a different meeting and different recording, I just want to be sure that we're on the record. We are considering a policy for the board related to the Governor's Executive Order 2509 about a banning of cell phone and related technologies in the school from the start of the day to the end of the day. And we've had one listening session opportunity. At this point, I would encourage anybody who wants to provide information, feedback about this to pick up a copy of the boilerplate. It'll be available the weekday of August 11th. And probably the best mechanism, if they have commented, to write it out for us. Email, or bring in something to the district office, which Charmin tipped in. That way the board can collect thoughts of people and consider all important factors that they may need to in developing this policy. The opportunity for community comment will also be at the start of that September board meeting, regularly scheduled. The needle in the haystack for me is going to be what isn't addressed in the policy, in the boilerplate, in the Governor's Executive Order that might be important for one or more of our families here in the Reed's Board School District. I really want to know what we're missing. So if anybody has that feedback, that's what I've been really seeking and I hope the board is looking for that information as well. So I just wanted to be on the record with that. Second item, our food service director gave a quick report about the summer meal program. He was very happy to let us know that we've done a 20% increase in participation this year. And that's a very substantial increase for us. And the, yes, it helps with the funding, production, reimbursements of that program, but it also means that we've got 20% more students that we're feeding. And these are lunches that are designed to be important fuel for student bodies. And the fact that we're able to see so many more students getting those meals is important. We wanted to acknowledge the work of Mrs. Scuile and Mrs. Corcoran in delivering that and getting those meals out. I'm just very happy with the overall success and growth of that program. So, good news from food service tonight. The third item, we talked about the Highland playground and logging out the playground. At the start of summer, the, I don't know what the term is, to be correct, the people who buy logs, were buying logs. And our contractor was scheduled to work this week. They had stopped buying logs and so he is not going to do that work. We set parameters on this project that the sale of the logs needs to be enough to cover the cost of the work. This can't be an expense to the district. So we're pausing the project until the buyers who purchased timber are buying again. So it was going to be this week, but it's on pause and it's got to do with the market and on timber. And that's what I have for you, any questions?
Buildings and, any outdoor facilities? Did Mr. Shoff say that they're ready to go and ready to meet?
It's been nice to not have a seismic project to work around this year. Had an extra custodial staff as we transitioned, one who will be leading us. So we've actually had extra bodies and there's quite a bit of work getting done. Not having to work around construction and having floors done. I think they're very happy with progress they made. I see a lot of paint happening inside of Highland, just tidying things up. And when I walk into the high school, the floors are all shining and I see the buckets where they're working next, so I know there's progress happening, so... Track got restripped and it's shining again, so quite a few things happening. If we could manage to do it uninhibited.
How's our kindergarten enrollment?
This morning I heard we have 31 registered, which that's a good sized class, 20 and 21. So it's kind of assumed we'll get a few more in the first couple of days of school. Keep our fingers crossed. I'd like to see as much enrollment as possible and registrations as possible. We want to see overall our enrollment going up. So our fingers crossed that people are coming back to school.
Questions for John?
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Okay, consent agenda. This is routine actions that typically require no discussion, such as approval of the previous meeting minutes and the acceptance of donations, frequently addressed collectively in a single vote by the board. Under the consent agenda, it approved four minutes from July 9th and approved certified administrative hiring of physical education health teacher at the junior senior high school. I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda number nine as presented, A, B, and sub one.
Motion made by Bonn Gouer and seconded by Kim Cardy to accept the consent agenda. All papers, say aye and raise your hand. Aye, passing the unanimous vote, thank you. Actions. Pretty much just waiting on, what if I had information on the left, right?
I don't think you'll be able to vote if your October, sorry, your September meeting on policy.
Yeah.
So any action on policy would probably be your October meeting, which will still meet the deadline.
Discussions. Cindy? Anything?
Nothing.
Mine?
Not really.
Why am I always going to have to carry the weight?
You're good at it.
It, I will say that Mr. Shoff and his crew have done a pretty good job this year. You know, I always have in the 70th or the 50th classroom union come to Reed's Board. I heard some positive comments and had a few questions, but for the most part, positive comments. You know, even though they're so brave standing, you know, on guard at the doors of the high school anymore, it's still, you know, kind of nice to hear the positive comments from the attendees. I just, you know, next month will be, or the end of this month will be the start of school. I would, you know, encourage people to come and share their thoughts and ideas at board meetings and so that we could make our district the best it can be for our students. When you show up, just encourage you and remind you that, you know, our staff members are hardworking. They care for our kids and if you come with an agenda that's gonna be negative, I'll be the first one to stand up and say, thank you very much for your information and there's the door. You know, come back when you got a little better attitude. So I think we put up a little too much, at least I feel I did last year and I'm not gonna let that happen this year. So I just wanted to make that clear as the continuing president of the board and with two new members, Kim Cardy and Cindy Goss. I, you know, they're gonna hold me, my feet to the fire and expect that to happen. So we've got a tremendous bunch of teachers and helpers in both our buildings and I think they need everybody's support. There's some things that are coming up, like this cell phone thing that we're gonna get paid, you know, whether we want to or not by the state of Oregon and we have to make it work. Or the fact that, you know, the money we thought we were gonna get isn't gonna come. And again, we have the state to thank for that or, you know, not thank for that. And, but I just want you to know that as this board and as administrative staff and teachers, I think, you know, we got the best of the best. And if you come here and want to be negative, be ready to be met and on by this board president and the best of us because we wouldn't be here if we didn't think we had, you know, quality bunch of teachers and quality bunch of staff. And as you heard from the report so far, I mean, you write down the lunch lady and her helper. I mean, you know, you talk about Laura Scuile or anywhere on the coast and the reference is, oh yeah, the lunch lady at Reed's Board. We got, we got the good ones, so... Okay, that horse is worn out, I'll talk to him about it. Community comments? Anything up there you can see, John?
Charmin, any thing we're missing?
Sorry, I closed the comments, so let me check.
Yeah, nothing, nothing I'm looking.
Thank you. Okay, board member comments? No, no board member comment?
I do, I do.
Okay, thank you.
As a board member and a former employee...
Um, as a board member and a former employee of the district, um, I would just like to put this out there to, uh, the staff and, and parents and stuff, that I would like the opportunity to come into the buildings just to, I think, just revisit the atmosphere of the, the buildings and stuff, kind of memories, I guess, type thing, and see what's changed and, and what's new and innovated when I left. So if any, anybody has any issues with me not coming, I know, I appreciate that. If you're welcome to a visit now and then, uh, I would, I would love to do that. So I just want to get that out there, um, to, to you guys. So, um, you know, I loved my work when I left, but, um, now I'm old, so things have changed.
Bonnie, you're looking for an invitation to come in and visit some classrooms?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And I got to save my piece already, so I might have to check the oxygen on my tank if I had to. You know, it's not going to be an easy year. I mean, this meeting tonight's pretty short and, um, but, uh, we've got a lot of work to do and so does our staff, our administrative staff, our teachers and stuff. But I think if we stick together and, uh, remember why we're here, you know, it's not about ego, it's not about paycheck, although, you know, paying the bills is nice. It's not about Rachel Amos, you know, giving us all the money we can get, especially through Jim and the guy.
No pressure there.
It's about, you know, it's about what we're going to be able to make happen for our kids. And, uh, you know, the presentation we had to start off with, you know, is, uh, one of the things and the accolades are another thing that, you know, make it right, make it worthwhile. And, uh, you know, we'll be having some sporting events coming up, fall sports coming up, football cross country. Um, do we have a swim team this year? No?
Yeah, and the sign-up track, that's a winter sport, so.
Okay. Volleyball, we got volleyball happening. And, uh, we got some free strikes on our track too. So, I mean, we're making things happen. They, they might not be great, great big giant leaps. They might be little baby steps, but it's happening. And, you know, I invite you to jump on board and be part of the positive part of, you know, our district and for our kids and, and helping us out, making our job a little easier. Now does he, now do the new members have anything to say?
I don't think I should have something to add now, but got nothing. Next time, Carrie, next time.
I'm going to hold you. Anybody else in the audience have anything to say? Real fast. Does that is?
Um, I just want to say that I invited Mrs. Brewer to my classroom last year, and it was a wonderful experience. I very much enjoyed having her in my classroom, and I would encourage anyone to, to do that. So it, it was great to have you as a guest. Thank you.
Thank you. I really enjoyed that. It was a lot of fun.
You, and it's kind of funny because you don't know how many questions I got about, you know, wanting to know about my t-shirt. Okay, so that was kind of fun. It was interesting. This is last thing.
As a teacher, I'm already thinking of some lessons I have planned that I would love to invite you all to. Would email be the best way to invite you? How do you want me to go about that?
Email would be great.
Perfect, thanks.
Thank you.
Please encourage, or if you pass this along with any of the teachers, uh, if you email one, email them all.
Yes.
And it, they don't have to do anything with it, but that way they're all receiving the same messaging from staff if the staff reach out that way.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I'm reaching out to all of them.
That's cool.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, at that, we're adjourned.